I'd like to welcome everyone to this April 24th meeting of the Rockingham County School Board. The first item that we have tonight is to approve the agenda, so we're going to start there. Do members, do you have a motion to approve the agenda? Thank you, Mr. Folk. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Dr. McQuilkin. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of approving the agenda as presented, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. And thank you all for coming tonight. I would like to welcome everyone here. Thanks for coming out on such a beautiful evening. I would also like to acknowledge that Mr. Breeden is not able to join us tonight, so if you guys can keep him in your thoughts, that would be great. Now, if you can please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance, please remove your hats and stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, undebted, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And thank you to our tech department for that quick thinking. Now, if you can all please join me in a moment of silence. Thank you. The next item on our agenda is the recognition and presentation portion of the agenda. And we will begin with school board recognitions. And I'm going to turn the podium over to Mr. Chris Knoll.
Good evening Chair Lohr, members of the board, Dr. Schikele, public in attendance. It's my pleasure to welcome you to Turner Ashby High School, home of the Knights. I want to apologize, first of all, for the fact that we didn't have our flag out this evening. We're getting ready for a spring production here this week and we had to do some striking of the set here to get ready for tonight, so my apologies, it's probably backstage somewhere, but I couldn't find it quickly enough, so thanks to the tech staff for their quick response there. We are privileged to have many students deserving of recognition for their character and good choices they make at school on a daily basis. We're grateful for the support of parents and to our faculty and staff for establishing high standards for them. Tonight, we acknowledge two seniors who exemplify the pillars of character each day, along with a parent volunteer who contributes significantly to our school community. As I turn this portion of the program over to my assistant principals Mindy Shiflett, Lindsay Cook, and Will Crockett for the presentations, I want to extend a public word of thanks to them for the work they do on a daily basis. They, along with Activities Director Donnie Coleman, dedicate significant time and energy to keeping our school safe, helping it run efficiently, and providing support to students with various needs. I am grateful to them.
Good evening. At this time, Mary Sizik, if you and your family can come forward, please.
Good evening, everyone. The Greek philosopher Heraclitus once said, "Good character is not formed in a week or a month, it is created little by little, day by day." Mary Elizabeth Sizik certainly lives her life by this statement. Mary has been an exemplary student during her four years at Turner Ashby. She is an academically stellar student who has an amazing 4.03 GPA and wants to pursue a career in healthcare administration. But what makes her even more exceptional is the person that Mary has become. She is kind, she is responsible, and she makes Turner Ashby a better place. Her teachers agree. Mrs. Cullers, her 12th grade English teacher, states, "In 22 years of teaching, Mary is a standout for her character. She is innately kind, empathetic, and always strives to do the right thing. Her presence helps make any class more positive." Mr. Lovell, her government teacher, adds, "Mary is one of my most favorite students this year. Academically, she's very bright, she's an active participant in class, and is very conscientious about keeping up with her classwork. She's one of the nicest students we have here at TA, and I can see that she is well-liked by her classmates. She's always quick with a smile and is a pleasure to have in class." And finally, Mrs. Quisenberry, Mary's crafts teacher, summed it up by stating, "Mary is such a sweet and kind student. She comes in with a smile and a good morning every class. She works hard and helps her classmates when they're struggling with techniques. I can always count on Mary to get things done. When we were planning for the Community Art and Craft Fair, she went so far above and beyond the expectation. So, Mary, little by little, day by day, you have chosen to help others, give of yourself, and add to our community. Thank you for all that you do, and we wish you the very best after graduation. We are proud to present to you the Brittany Lamb Kelly Coggsdale Character Council Award."
This is absolutely wonderful. Congratulations, Mary.
Thank you.
Congratulations, Mom. Congratulations, Dad. Congratulations, you have a wonderful sister. The Brittany Lamb Kelly Coggsdale Character Council Award is one of my favorite times, and I'm so glad we're here to present it this evening to Mary. This means that Mary is caring, she's a good citizen, she's fair, she's respectful, she's trustworthy, and we couldn't ask for anything more. But I do have a quote. But I'm going to end with a quote. Ms. Shiflett began with a quote, I'm going to end with a quote over there. But I'd like to say thank you so much for sharing Mary with us. And we know that you will do well, whatever you do throughout your life, because you have kindness and a goodness for other people, and that's what it's all about. Let us be grateful to people who make us happy. They are the charming gardeners who make our souls blossom. Congratulations. Let's give Mary a great big hand. Would you like to say something? I have something for you.
Good evening. I have the pleasure of speaking about Aidan Poulsen, so Aidan and your family can join me up front, please. Aidan Poulsen was nominated for this award because he sets an example for all students of integrity and takes personal responsibility for the direction of his future. His teachers tout that he is an amazing kid who navigates difficult conversations with grace and compassion. He has stepped up to leadership roles throughout the course of this year. His work ethic is wonderful, and he pushes other students to do their best work. He truly goes above and beyond in everything that he does. He is honest and kind. He accepts challenges and is a model for others in his class for problem-solving and finding solutions to activities. He is reliable for completing tasks, and other students look up to him. He is a truly deserving student. In fact, teachers and staff couldn't say anything bad about Aidan. He's an all-around great kid, he's always respectful, he does what he's supposed to do without asking, he's a great teammate. Aidan is the penultimate example of solid character. Congratulations, Aidan.
Well, I'm glad that you're tall, Aidan, because I have a quote, and I needed a tall person, so you fit the bill. Respect, responsibility, trustworthiness, did I hear those words? Kindness, caring, citizenship, fairness, all in one package, and we thank you so much. And thank you, Mom. My quote for Aidan is, "Never look down on anybody unless you're helping them up." And I bet that's what you do. Start with the pin. Klein's Dairy Bar. And you've got to hang this in the house, because you couldn't be prouder. Let's give him another round of applause.
I get to present the parent volunteer for here at Turner Ashby to Amy Knott, so if you'd like to come up and join me up front here. It's your turn. The Turner Ashby Marching Band has a long history of success. We are blessed with outstanding students who commit long hours to improving their craft. The current collection of Knights has just recently been named the 2022 2022 and 2023 Virginia Honor Band. One of the reasons this group of students have experienced so much success is through the efforts of dedicated volunteer parents. All of the parents associated with the program deserve credit for being willing to make the sacrifices that families have to make to provide quality opportunities for their children. Within this group of volunteers, one parent has distinguished herself. Serving as, and this is an incredible list, so get ready, band boosters president, leading the pit crew at every home football game and parades, helping fix the percussion equipment, fix the podium, fix the band trailer, towing the trailer to competitions, working at all the fundraisers, serving on the uniform selection committee, and then washing the uniforms, and organizing meals to feed our kids, which, if there's something left, I don't know what it is, to be honest with you. She has been, Mr. Nash says that she's been a great asset to the program. She's been there for eight years, or two children, however you measure that time. We are blessed to have her. I am honored to be able to present this award to you. Amy Knott.
I want to know how many hours a week you spend doing all this. Can you put a figure to it?
Cannot put a figure to it, no. August to November is crunch time for the band, so that is the majority of the time that we spend with the band. But they have events all year. We have a fundraiser this coming Saturday, come out and buy some chicken. And we appreciate all of the help from all the parents. Thank you.
I hope you hang this in a prominent place at your home. And Klein's Dairy Bar for you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, thank you. We could not do this without you.
Thank you.
That's what Mr. Crockett says, and I believe it.
Over the past several years, we have emphasized providing opportunities for students to have authentic learning experiences, giving opportunities for them to collaborate, communicate, think critically and creatively while developing good citizenship. We have also sought ways to meaningfully integrate different content areas in an attempt to blur the lines between subjects and demonstrate connections through fused collaborative courses. One example we wanted to share a bit with you tonight for our school presentation that arise from these efforts is the Celebrating Sims Project. We have a number of students and teachers who are involved with this project here to share a small taste of it with us this evening. I invite Mr. Beau Dickinson, social studies supervisor, here to introduce them to you.
Good evening, board. Thank you so much. Good evening, audience. It's indeed my pleasure to highlight a special and collaborative project that has taken shape over the past year between Rockingham County Schools and James Madison University, and the Celebrating Sims Project that is directed by Doctors Molly Godfrey and Sean McCarthy, who are actually here with us this evening, so thank you for joining us. Celebrating Sims actually started in 2015 as this wonderful project between JMU and Harrisonburg's Northeast Neighborhood. It was when a grant from Virginia Humanities funded the development of an exhibit about the famed local educator Lucy Francis Sims, as well as the school named in her honor and the community that surrounds it. This innovative project led to the development of six permanent exhibits, a mobile exhibit, which actually found its way into several of our libraries, a commemorative booklet, and an interactive website that features a digital archive of over 1,000 photographs, videos, original interviews, and K through 12 curricular materials. It's those last two that really kind of hinge on this next development that I'm about to talk about, that involved our teachers as well as our schools. The permanent exhibit is actually symbiotically featured in the front hall of the Sims School, but many students and teachers here may actually have noticed that a portion of this same exhibit can also be found on the walls of all four county high schools, thanks to the willingness of our Celebrating Sims team, as well as the support of a generous donor. And if you find your way, if you have the time this evening, it's down the hall and on the left, just past the front office, of course, in the social studies wing. Very thankful for that addition to all four schools. This past summer, the Celebrating Sims team collaborated on a grant through the JMU College of Education, and that was to partner with RCPS through a new elective in African-American history, which we're proud to say is featured at all four county high schools. This particular project involved Owen Longacre at Spotswood High School, who's with us this evening, as well as Tim Van Scoick and Jennifer Dean, who teach that course here at TA. We're also pleased and honored to have some of their students with us today. They worked over the summer, the teachers did, that is, and they were educational consultants, along with a number of folks at JMU Libraries, and they collaborated together to carefully design and develop a project that would involve their classes actually conducting oral history interviews. And that is oral history interviews with actual former Sims students who attended this area's historically black high school before its closure in 1965 during desegregation. These talented educators used this as a valuable opportunity to teach their students about local black history, as well as a real-world and hands-on learning experience involving the nuances of formal interview techniques, as well as honing skills in the technology of digital audio recordings. So rather than just tell their students about the history of the Sims School, they have facilitated a real-world learning experience that centers the student themselves in leading the interviews in a project that could not be more authentic and meaningful. And we are excited to have them with us here this evening, along with some of their teachers, who will tell us more. Go ahead and come forward, guys. Thank you so much.
Good evening, all. I'm Avery Chandler, a student at Spotswood High School. In the early stages of our Celebrating Sims Project, we took time to learn about how we could utilize oral history as a research tool. As displayed in picture one, our first step was inviting a guest speaker from JMU, L. Renee, to discuss her dissertation work in oral history. We then completed our own independent research using a research template and the JMU Celebrating Sims website numbered as pictures two and three up on the slide. Once we developed an understanding of the Sims School and our interviewees, JMU Libraries visited and taught us how to use their specialized audio equipment. This prepared us to then meet our interviewees at the Sims Center on January 20th.
You may proceed to the next slide. I'm Brody Sigmund, by the way, and I'm here to tell you about our next step in the Sims journey, which was to visit the Lucy Sims Center, which previously was the Lucy Sims School, which was a center for the African-American community in Harrisonburg. And within the Lucy Sims Center, there is a trove of information across the walls about things that happened in and around the school during its time when it was still running. And for students who were not touring the hallways and learning about the school, they had opportunities both in a classroom that was formerly Mary Ockard Fairfax's classroom, who was a renowned Sims teacher that taught for many years and had a very positive impact on the African-American community. And for students who were not in the classroom or in the hallway, they were touring the nearby cemetery where Lucy Sims was buried and learning about the history of the area from the groundskeeper. Afterwards, the students went to lunch and were able to begin conversation with their future interviewees, who were all former Lucy Sims students. And that was to break the ice and begin a form of dialogue and conversation with the interviewees that would allow for future interviews to operate more smoothly. But for my group, I was fortunate enough to do a joint onsite interview with Mr. Samuel and his sister Elizabeth Rohr, which allowed them to gesture to objects in the classroom and explain more specifically about their experience with the Sims School.
Good evening. My name is Emily Hernandez, and on the day of our interview, I actually had the opportunity to talk with Dr. Sheri D. Johnson. And during our time together, we got to learn about her formative years at Lucy Sims and the quality education she received while attending there. We spent our time talking about the staff, her classmates, and the great activities the school had to offer for not only her, but the community. I must admit, I wasn't nervous at first, but after hearing all the stories and experiences Ms. Johnson had, we very quickly became comfortable. And what stood out to me in our interviews is how much Ms. Johnson expressed gratitude for the community that formed at Sims School and supported by the loving teachers and staff. She gives them credit for providing her with knowledge, but also pushing her to become her best and setting a firm foundation for her future. I am extremely grateful for JMU, the Celebrating Sims Project, and Ms. Johnson for allowing us to capture these moments. So I would like to now share just a short clip of our interview together where Dr. Johnson discusses the school and all the activities she chaired so much. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Emily Hernandez. It is February 15th. So today, we are here just to want to get to know you. So if you wouldn't mind just saying a little bit about yourself, a little bit of what you do, just to get to know you a little bit. Okay, we're glad you're excited as well. So can you tell us about any of your experiences from Lucy Sims?
Lucy Sims was a good place to go to school in my elementary experience. I had very good elementary teachers. They were very serious about students giving their best and giving their all. And I remember just learning a lot of things. But it wasn't just in the classroom that we were learning, but they did a lot of what we consider extracurricular activities with us. And I remember the musicals and the choir, and especially at holidays. We would do a lot of things around the holidays. Christmas, May Day. May Day was a big occasion.
All right. Hello, everyone. My name is Leah Hedrick, and I'm representing Turner Ashby High School tonight. I had the pleasure of meeting and interviewing Mr. Curry, a former Sims student. I mean, I was a bit nervous about speaking face-to-face with a stranger. However, Mr. Curry's positive attitude made me feel right at home. He spoke about his personal experiences from meeting his wife in the fourth grade to how the school truly felt like a community, how welcoming the teachers were and his personal connection with them. Hearing Mr. Curry say this really touched me and made me feel even more connected to my community and Turner Ashby with all its wonderful staff. I am so grateful to have sat down with Mr. Curry and to have heard his amazing life story.
Hello, everyone. My name is Caitlin Low, and I'm a senior here at TA. And I'm going to talk about the significance of this project. So the significance of this project was to preserve the stories of those who lived in a time that we learn about across the nation. Oral history offers those who listen an extra sense of connection in the dialects and the imagery and emotion in their stories that they share. Also, speaking with these individuals gave us students an extra sense of connection with our own community. Personal accounts of the Jim Crow era are a lens into the everyday experiences that widely differ from our lives today. One of the most important reasons, however, is because one day, these interviews will be the only direct source of information from people who lived and experienced these events. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Blue Johnson. I attend Turner Ashby High School here, and I wanted to talk about how this will affect future generations. These recordings will eventually be published on the Celebrating Sims website for anyone to listen to whenever they please. This preserves a piece of our history that is connected to a greater American history of desegregation and Jim Crow. This is impactful for future generations because they will be able to listen to these recordings and gain a new understanding of history that they can't just get from history books.
I want to share one last, or first of all, let's applaud our students. I want to applaud you for your efforts and how well-spoken you all were articulating the importance of this. That was a very impressive presentation. We have one last photograph we want to share, and this is just to demonstrate the power of this experience and how real-world and meaningful it was for us all. It's Mr. Longacre from Spotswood High School that was just in this impromptu moment one day at Sims, and he's standing next to Elizabeth Rohr, Elizabeth Yule Rohr. And she was not only a student of the Sims School, her and her five brothers and sisters were actually in the handful of students that desegregated Rockingham County Public Schools in 1965. Excuse me, '64, '65. There was a transition year of '64, '65, and you had the option. They were in the handful of students that actually desegregated our school division. And we had the opportunity to interview both of them, well, Samuel Yule and his sister Elizabeth, that is, that took part in this project. In the midst of that interview, they looked up on the wall and saw this photograph of the famed educator that one of the students mentioned earlier. This is Mary Ockard Fairfax and her second-grade class. And if you click once more, they saw their sister Margaret. It was just this beautiful moment of living history, of storytelling, and that's the essence of oral history and what you capture in a recorded interview for the sake of posterity. So thank you, teachers and students, and thank you, James Madison University, and thank you, TA, for highlighting this project tonight. Thank you.
Thank you very much for that presentation. And also, thank you to TA for being such warm and gracious hosts to us tonight. We're going to now move on to the Inspire Awards, and our first presenter is Jathan Blankenship, a student presenting to Mr. Jerry Ridgeway, technology teacher here at TA.
Good evening, school board. My name is Jathan Blankenship, and tonight I would like to recognize Mr. Ridgeway, who has been an inspiration on many occasions throughout the past four years. Although I'm only a freshman, I've had the opportunity to work with Mr. Ridgeway through my middle school career, through Virginia TSA, at the chapter and regional level. Mr. Ridgeway selflessly gives so much time and services TSA and TAHs. He is always there to provide guidance and advice to TSA members throughout the chapter and region. He has personally helped me celebrate wins and recover through losses. Mr. Ridgeway cares deeply about his students and the TSA organization. He is often working with students after school, before school, and on the weekends. He is the best chapter and regional advisor out there. And we can't forget about the mustache. Thank you, Mr. Ridgeway. Thank you, Mr. Ridgeway.
Jayden, thank you so much for that presentation, and also, thank you, Mr. Ridgeway. And I believe Mr. Ridgeway is retiring this year, and to show my age a little bit, he was quite young when I was here as a student. He was one of the teachers I really remember making an impact on me as well. I know you've made impacts on so many students throughout your career, and thank you so much for your service. Let's give Mr. Ridgeway another hand. Next, we will have Hope Hatton, Anali Hernandez Reyes, Ethan Lassiter, and Bennett Wilburn, all students presenting to Cory Hutchinson, a social studies teacher here at TA. And I think I mispronounced every single name. I apologize.
So my name is Hope Hatton. Mr. Hutch has been my teacher for the past two years. The only reason I know where countries are or why they're important is because of him. If you tell him you are struggling, he will do whatever he can to help. He makes it easier to ask questions without feeling dumb for not knowing the answer, and I ask a lot of questions he can tell you. He finds ways to relate material to our lives so we actually understand what's going on, whether that be through sports metaphors, funny videos, or Rocky and Bullwinkle episodes. He is overall a great teacher and one of the reasons I want to be a high school history teacher after college. He will always be one of my favorite teachers and the reason I beat my mom in jeopardy every night.
Hi, I'm Ethan Lassiter, and I've had the pleasure of having Mr. Hutchinson as a teacher for two years, as well as having him as a coach on the golf team for two years. And I nominated him for this because he really inspires me personally to be my greatest as a student and as a person. And he's just a phenomenal teacher who helps every student according to any of their specific needs and explains everything in accordance to a variety of different learning styles. He's definitely the most effective teacher I've ever had, and I've learned so much from him, and he's easily deserving of this award.
Hello, I am Ani Hernandez Reyes. I nominated Mr. Hutchinson because he is a great teacher who constantly motivates his students to do good in school. He offers to help each student individually, no matter what. He devotes a good amount of time to make sure each student actually understands the curriculum. He will sit down with you until you understand. Mr. Hutchinson has propelled me as a student to do my very best, whether it's on a small reading quiz or on a huge unit test. Overall, he is a teacher who should be recognized for all his outstanding work that he has done, which inherently excels Turner Ashby as a whole. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Bennett Wilburn, and I am a sophomore at Turner Ashby High School. Throughout my schooling at Turner Ashby, I have been very blessed with the opportunity to have incredible teachers educate me. I have been fortunate to have one of my favorite teachers, Mr. Hutchinson, for both my freshman and sophomore years. If you have ever been in a classroom with Mr. Hutchinson, you can tell that everything he does always has a point, and those things are always done to perfection. You never leave his class thinking it was a waste of time or that you didn't learn anything. Every time you step into his classroom with him, you know you need to pay attention because he's always going to give you exactly what you need to succeed with a particular unit or assessment. Mr. Hutchinson is so eager to help his students get what they want out of his class, if only they're willing to put forth a fraction of the effort that he puts in. He really does make it easy to succeed as long as you meet him in the middle. While I definitely wish he taught history for juniors and seniors, too, I won't forget these awesome two years I've had in his classroom.
Thank you, Mr. Hutchinson. And also, so let's give those students a round of applause, because weren't they amazing speakers? And again, Mr. Hutchinson, thank you for all of your dedication to their students. We're now going to move to Scott McAvoy, a parent presenting to Melanie Blair, a kindergarten teacher at John Whalen. Melanie Bear, I'm sorry. And I think it's also... Well, Scott, you're going to have to tell me how to pronounce your name. McAvoy Yay!
Yep, so I am Scott McAvoy. This is my son, John, and we're presenting to Mrs. Bear. Mrs. Bear has demonstrated an amazing talent for education with my son, John McAvoy. She has been an inspiration to him, as he often recognizes with a twinkle in his eye how important she is to him each day. She is able to find the best paths for his skills and areas for improvement. I am pleased with the opportunities she provides for engaging with the class, chaperoning field trips, and communicating regularly through CSO. Mrs. Bear facilitates John and me writing and recording voice messages from the classroom to my office. I am extremely grateful for how she shows me his achievements each day with each new lesson. John knows his classroom is important for him to grow into a well-rounded student. Mrs. Bear truly cares about him. She is patient and informative at parent-teacher conferences, working to offer the best ways for me to help him succeed in school. John has developed a fondness for her that I know is meaningful to him. She has a keen sense of balancing fun and education. He is learning how to explore John Whalen and to feel comfortable in his classroom with his friends and Mrs. Bear.
Mrs. Bear, thank you so much. Mr. McAvoy, you couldn't see that I think John was a little shy to be up there tonight, but Ms. Bear kept encouraging him, and the love for her students in her classroom really shone through tonight. So thank you, John, for being up here tonight, and thank you, Ms. Bear and Mr. McAvoy. We're now going to move on to public comments, the public comment portion of our meeting. Our first speaker is Jack Dixon, and as he makes his way up here, I'm going to remind everyone that there are guidelines that you should have picked up before you spoke. And please address your comments to the board as a whole. And thank you to Dr. McQuilkin for going over the pillars of character, because we do value and want to support... Your comments need to follow the pillars of character, and there will be a three-minute timer that will begin when you start, and there'll be a 30-second warning timer. Okay. Mr. Dixon.
Good evening, School Board, Dr. Schike. I'm Jack Dixon, like Ms. Rohr said. I'm a graduate of Spotswood High School and a lifelong resident of Elkhorn. Last week, I was afforded the opportunity to travel to Farmville with Mr. Dickinson and the social studies class to attend a program on the Moton School. It was a wonderful experience. I was a little apprehensive at first because I haven't been around teenagers in a long time, and I didn't know what to expect, but immediately, I was put at ease. The experience itself as a field trip was something I'd never been to before. In my time in school, field trips were always planned as part of the curriculum that would somehow fit in, but more than likely, they were entertainment versus educational and a place to check off to say, I've been to Washington DC or Baltimore. This was unique because the students taught the class. They taught the students that were also there. They taught us, but they taught five surviving members of the Moton School, which was a truly... That would be a truly terrifying experience for me as a student of history to talk about a historical event to people that lived through it, experienced it, and have them offer criticism, kind criticism and kind correction when they got the story wrong. This opportunity was something that could never be reconstructed in a classroom. They were able to walk the streets of Farmville in front of the First Baptist Church, talk to civil rights leaders and icons about their experience, and that could never happen again outside of that environment. The one thing that struck me the most, too, was the Moton School students' attitudes towards our students. They have hundreds of school groups that come through there a year, and they said our group is the only group that teaches them, that engages with them, and works with them. That just truly struck me, and it's a wonderful program, which leads me to my second point. We talk about destination division when we talk about our community and our school division. To me, I think that term dehumanizes what actually makes us a destination division. It's not about budget allotment. It's not about classroom ratio size. It's not about having the newest sports facility or the best science room. It's the people in those rooms that facilitate that, all the way from the central office down, and we need to hold on to those people and cherish them. When we look at our curriculum models, slamming a burden curriculum that forces kids to learn rote memorization instead of inquiry, reason, Socratic method thinking, that hurts our children. It doesn't produce educated, prepared workers, leaders, and citizens. Truly, in my opinion, rote memorization is no better than indoctrination. So if we can continue to foster these programs, these leaders, and this type of system, as we saw from the Lucy Sims example, that was wonderful, we can continue to be a destination division, and I hope we continue to do that. Thank you to Mr. Dickinson for allowing me to come on the trip, and thank you to the board for allowing it to happen.
Thank you. Our next speaker will be Leah Hendrick. Leah? Did you... And then Evan Kulp? Kulp? Kulp, okay.
Hi, my name is Evan Kulp, and I'm a senior here at Turner Ashby High School. I just wanted to take a moment to comment on the changes in students' internet access that occurred a few months ago. It is my understanding that these changes were the result of Securely, the internet security company used by the school, switching from a blacklist to a whitelist system, wherein only websites specifically approved by them are available for use by the students. If you were to ask any one of my peers, they would agree that this has been a very large inconvenience. Not being able to work on most scholarships at school, being unable to access important resources for the transition to college, and having to sift through pages of links when doing research projects before finding one that is even unblocked are only a few of the problems this has caused. Not to mention the numerous tools used in extracurricular activities that we've lost. My suggestion would be to reconfigure to a setup that allows these restrictions to vary based on grade level. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kulp. Hang around till the end. I think we might have some questions during the comment... You might find out some stuff during the comment period. That concludes our comments from the public for tonight. We will now move into highlights by board members, and we're going to start with Dr. McQuilkin.
Thank you, Ms. Rohr. First of all, I'd like to thank the administration at Turner Ashby for their hospitality this evening. Thank you for hosting us. We have a big audience here, and we're happy to have them all. Thank you, and thank you for providing us a dinner prior to the meeting. Otherwise, we probably wouldn't have one, so we appreciate that. The next, I'd like to talk about some awards that our students have won. Last meeting was on April the 11th, and while we were here in the school board meeting, we had artwork that some of our students did being evaluated with a Virginia School Boards Association Valley Regional Art Contest. And this includes pictures or photos from Winchester all the way down to Buena Vista and Shenandoah and Augusta and Harrisonburg and Waynesboro. There are a lot of school divisions part of our region. And believe it or not, I believe it, we have three winners, and that is spectacular when you consider that we were up against this competition. So I'd like to share those winners with you this evening, or the names, anyway. We had first place in the high school division. The picture is "Open Door" by Zoe Earl, and she's taught by Martha Maddox at Broadway High School. The first place in the Valley Region Middle School is "Multiverse Beetle" by Diana Zudulin, taught by Samantha Ritter at Montevideo Middle School. And third place in the Valley Region Elementary Division was "Rocky the Otter" by Raleigh Bennett, Bennett, taught by Rebecca Rogers at Peakview Elementary School. I think we ought to recognize these students. My next highlight is the Riffy Golf Tournament that occurred on Saturday, this past Saturday, the 22nd of April. And even though the rain stopped the competition, the day for the golfers was considered a success. They only played nine holes instead of 18, but they all had a good time and garnered a lot of money for the Rockingham Educational Foundation, which supports our school division greatly. And my last comment is an update on the superintendent search. Since the list of applicants was presented on Monday, April the 10th, the board has been making progress in the selection process. So let's hope that by the end of May, we will be able to make an announcement.
Thank you, Dr. McQuilkin. Mr. Cross?
Thanks again for everybody showing up, especially all the students here tonight coming out. It's good to see you, and good luck to you as you graduate here in June, not next month, but in June. And I know you guys, many of you are really excited to begin your new chapter in life, so good luck to everything that you do tonight. I just want to say that I also want to say thank you to Deputy Irvin that was here earlier. I don't know where he went, but SRO Irvin was here. I want to say thank you to him for everything he does here at Turner Ashby High School, and thank you for the administration for all that you do. My only highlight tonight is just to talk just briefly and say thank you to Ms. McQuilkin and Ms. Rohr for all that you guys have been doing for the superintendent search. You guys have done a great job, and this has been a pleasant experience going through this. So we're excited. We've been working hard in this process, and we're looking forward to hiring the next superintendent here in Rockingham County. So thank you, guys, for all that you're doing, and I just want to recognize both of you tonight.
Thank you. Mr. Falk?
I would just like to say thank you to Principal Noel and your team for welcoming us here. It's always a pleasure coming to Turner Ashby High School. And I've got to say that a real highlight for me, as I reflect six more months on the board, one of the things I will probably miss more than anything else are the student presentations and the Brittany Lamb Character Counts awards. And the school presentation about Sims was just wonderful. This was just a wonderful evening, and I thank you all for your contribution to it.
Thank you. I'll go next, if that's okay. I've had a great two weeks. Definitely, things are getting warmer, and our minds are starting to go towards prom and then graduation, and I can't believe another school year is coming to a close. And with that, I've been able to attend an FFA banquet at Broadway High School, and it's always so great to celebrate our students and see our students just grow from little ones. I've seen these grow from little ones all the way to the students here tonight. Those skills with public speaking and poise and presentation, it's just such an honor. Also, this week, I've been able to... I was able to go to... Or the past two weeks, I was able to go to Folks Run Elementary School and read to students, and I read a book about a tractor and a farm dog. And then the next day, we came back with a tractor and animals for the kids to see. I was able to do a school board thing and then a mom thing with a Farm to School Day at that school, and it was just so much fun seeing the kids light up and just being able to interact with our students. And then last week, I was able to go to the Plains Elementary School Community Helpers' Day, and I would like to thank them for doing that. They brought a helicopter in, they brought SWAT teams, all just for education, not for... I only got one text from the superintendent, but they also had community helpers there that were cutting hair and collecting it for wigs for people who need hair for wigs. So I got 11 inches cut off, and I would like to thank Ms. Wendy Hart for donating her time and services and to help others create wigs for... her time and services and to help others create wigs for people who need them. And then finally, our final musical is this weekend, so if you haven't, if you haven't had enough fun yet, please go out to the musical at Elkton Middle School, not this weekend, but the weekend of, the first weekend in May, and enjoy a musical, or go enjoy. Have you guys had prom? Has TA had prom yet, or is that coming up this weekend? This Saturday? Okay, so be good, but have fun, and get out there and enjoy these last few weeks of school. And now I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Scheichel.
Thank you, Chair Lohr. Again, thank you to Mr. Noel, Ms. Shiflett, Ms. Cook, and Mr. Crockett for hosting us here tonight. I also want to thank the Rockingham Educational Foundation. Through an auction, they raised more than $5,000 that they have donated to our schools to recognize staff. Also, the Broadway High School, Spotswood High School, and Turner Ashby High School have been recognized as Virginia Blue Ribbon Schools, so that is a great honor in the area of fine arts. The VMEA Blue Ribbon Award is the highest award given to schools' music programs in the Commonwealth of Virginia, and those three schools were recognized. And then finally, FCCLA, Family Career and Community Leaders of America, more than 20 students were recognized at a recent event, and many of them are now qualified to go to national competition. But also, in addition to that, RCPS CTE Director Eric Fitzgerald received the Distinguished Service Award in recognition of his support to the FCCLA organization in each local chapter for the past seven years in his position. So congratulations to Eric Fitzgerald as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Scheichel. Thank you, Dr. Scheichel. And let's go ahead and give Mr. Fitzgerald a round of applause for that. He's here.[731.13][731.13](APPLAUSE). Board members, we'll now move on to our action items portion of the agenda, and the first action item we have are the approval of the minutes. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes as presented? Thank you, Mr. Falk. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Dr. McQuilkin. Is there any discussion regarding the minutes? Hearing none, we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor of approving the minutes as presented, the April 11th minutes as presented, please say aye. Aye. Opposed? Same sign. Motion carries unanimously. The next item on the agenda is field trips. Dr. Scheichel?
Board members, you have a number of field trips for your approval tonight, beginning with Montevideo Middle School, TSA State Leadership Conference, May 4th through the 7th, five students to Hampton, Virginia, Broadway High School, FBLA National Leadership Conference, June 27th through July 1st, five students to Atlanta, Georgia, J. Frank Killiard Middle School, National Kidwind Solar Competition, May 14th through the 17th, three students to Boulder, Colorado, and East Rockingham High School, TSA State Leadership Conference, May 4th through the 7th, five students to Hampton, Virginia, and I recommend approval of those exciting field trips.
Thank you, Dr. Scheichel. It is so wonderful to see our students being so successful and being able to travel again. Board members, do I have a motion? Thank you, Mr. Cross. Is there a second? Thank you, Mr. Falk. Is there any discussion regarding the motion to follow the superintendent's recommendation to approve the field trips as presented? Hearing none, we'll vote. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next on the agenda, we have the naming...
Of the Massana Technical Center Tool Room.
Yeah, I was trying to pull it up to see...
Now, normally, we make a big deal out of naming parts of our buildings. Now, Jerry Will is not here tonight, right? Is he? Okay. So those of you who are watching online and those who are here, I'd ask you not to broadcast this. We did keep this fairly quiet because on May, in the middle of May, I think it's May 14th, is the community, May 17th, is the Community Leaders Breakfast at the Festival Conference Center at JMU. And at that point, so MTC hosts that, and at that point, MTC would like to recognize Mr. Will with this resolution passed by the Rockingham County School Board. They can't do that unless the school board passes this resolution. So I will let all of you on the, all the board members have had access to the resolution. Mr. Will served as an instructional assistant for 11 years at MTC and worked in the toolroom all the time, organizing, created all kinds of positive relationships with students as a role model, served as a role model. And you have the text of the resolution, but I would, if the board is in favor of this, I would let Mr. Hutton read the actual resolution for the first time when Mr. Will is present at the Community Leaders Breakfast. And if there are no objections to it, I recommend to approve the resolution, naming the toolroom at MTC in the Collision Repair Lab, the Jerry L. Will Tool Room. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Scheichel. Do I have a motion? Actually, the chair's going to make this one. I move that we approve the resolution to name the toolroom in the Collision Repair Lab at Massana Technical Center. Is there a second? Thank you, Mr. Falk. Is there any discussion? So we're not talking to, we're not telling the family this, because I saw his green kids at the banquet, and I know the family, this will mean a whole lot to the family.
Yes. Yeah, Mr. Hutton asked me whether we could have this approved in closed session. That is not possible per policy, and, you know, based on the limitations of closed session, that wouldn't have been appropriate. But he asked whether we could at least keep it as quiet as we could, so I told him we would try that, but no promises made, of course, since, you know, sometimes this information...
So shh. Everybody, shh.
But there were also, just to clarify this too, and as always, when a process like this is undertaken, it requires letters of support from community members. So all the pieces certainly were in place before we brought the resolution to the board, and the board members were individually made aware of it a little bit ago.
Okay. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries, but shh. Okay, now we'll move on to the Special Education Plan, and we'll have Dr. Melissa Bentley present to us.
Good evening, Chair Lohr, members of the board, and Dr. Scheichel. At the last school board meeting, I was here to present the RCPS Annual Special Education Plan, and I explained then that this serves as a formal agreement between our school board and the Virginia Department of Education, and it implements the federal and state laws and regulations surrounding educating students with disabilities. And so accordingly, the dispersment of federal and state funds is contingent upon the approval. So I am back tonight to seek your approval on the Special Education Annual Plan.
Thank you.
And I recommend to approve the Special Education Annual Plan for 2023-24 as presented by Dr. Bentley.
Thank you, Dr. Scheichel. Do I have a motion?
I move that we follow the superintendent's recommendation to approve the Special Education Plan, 2324.
Thank you, Dr. McQuilkin. Is there a second? Thank you, Mr. Falk. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote on the motion to follow the superintendent's recommendation to approve the Special Education Plan for 2023-24. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed? Same sign. Motion carries 4-0. Next, we'll have Mr. Fitzgerald. Thank you so much. Thank you for all your work on that. That is definitely a mammoth undertaking, and we appreciate that.
Thank you, Melissa.
Okay, now we'll have Mr. Fitzgerald present the Perkins Plan.
Good evening. Chair Lohr, board members, and Dr. Scheichel. Excuse me. During our April 11th meeting, a proposal was given to you in your pocket for the Perkins Plan for 2324 school year. Tonight, I ask for your approval of that plan.
Thank you.
I do recommend approval of the CTE Perkins Local Plan for the 2023-2024 school year as presented by our award-winning CTE Director, Eric Fitzgerald.
Thank you, Dr. Scheichel and Mr. Fitzgerald. Do I have a motion? Thank you, Mr. Cross. Is there a second? Thank you, Mr. Falk. Is there any discussion? Is this the last, is this the last time we're going to see you?
I was going to say hallelujah as soon as you pass it, but I won't yet.
I'm going to cry.
This is the last one, yes, ma'am.
But is this the last time we're going to see you in front of the board?
Of course not, of course not.
In front of the board presenting. Do you have any, do you have anything for us in May or June?
Not any Perkins Plans, no, ma'am.
No Perkins Plans, no updated lists?
Oh, we might have something, who knows?
Well, thank you. Thank you.
Before you approve it, I do want to say something. This is my last one, and I do sincerely appreciate all of the support you've given me, all the students in the county, and especially our CTE programs. Again, I tell people this all the time, I spoke at the Rotary Luncheon today, and I was telling them how lucky we are to have such support in our county, not just from the school board, from the whole community. And those of you in the audience today, if you've ever gone to other counties, or if you've ever been involved in other school board meetings, I think if you've been here to compare it, got allergies. I think if you've been around to compare them, we are extremely lucky in this county to have the system that we have, and I sincerely mean that. Anything I can do to help in the future, and I sincerely mean this too, I'll be glad to do it, but you guys are awesome, and our community's awesome, so thank you for all your support. And with that, Ms. Lohr...
With that, you're going to make me cry.
With that, Ms. Lohr, I ask for approval.
I'm just going to, oh, wait, yeah, we got to do the, no, we did the motion. This is the discussion time, we're good. Mr. Fitzgerald was my ag teacher here at this school 50 years ago, something, I don't know. Not quite that long.
I can tell you some stories about you too, but I'm not going to do that tonight, right?
But it's just been such a pleasure working with you, and everything you said about the, it takes a community to run this, and you're, you've been a huge part of this community. And when Mr. Fitzgerald told, when I was a senior, right in those seats right there, Mr. Fitzgerald looked at me and said, "I think you should be an ag teacher," because that's what Mr. Fitzgerald did. He told everybody they should be an ag teacher. I looked at him and said, "Thank you, I think I'll volunteer instead." And I have spent my adult life volunteering for ag and education in this community, and now it's your turn, Mr. Fitzgerald, you're going to volunteer with me, starting July 1st, right?
Of course, I look forward to that, I really do.
Okay. Is there any other discussion? Okay, we'll now vote. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed? Same sign. Motion carries. Thank you.
Hallelujah. Thank you.
Thanks, Fitz.[1385.13][1385.13](APPLAUSE).
Okay, now we have Ms. Marcy Williams with Policy Revisions.
Hello, Chair Lohr, school board members, and Dr. Scheichel. I am here this evening to bring to you for your approval several policies. At the last meeting, I presented 17 policies for your information. Tonight, I want to point out that there are 16 for your approval, as we have removed Policy IKFD, Alternative Pathways for Attaining Credits. We realized that there was a criteria that needed to be included in that. So for tonight's approval, I'm requesting the 16 policies that are before you.
Thank you.
And I recommend approval of the proposed policies as presented last time for information and tonight for action by Ms. Williams.
Thank you, Dr. Scheichel. Members, do I have a motion?
I move that we approve the policies as presented.
Thank you, Dr. McQuilkin. Do I have a second? Thank you, Mr. Falk. Is there any discussion regarding the superintendent's recommendation to approve the proposed policy revisions as presented on April 11th? That was a mouthful. Hearing none, we'll vote. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed? Same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you so much for all of your work on this.
Thank you.
And then now you, and now that concludes our action items portion of our meeting. We will now move into information items, and I think we have some more policies to discuss.
Yes, thank you. Thank you. I do have for you this evening for your information, Policy GBOB, and that policy is about retirement pay. There's a small change in this policy as it relates to retirees' health insurance, so I would ask that you just look through that, and again, I'm presenting that for your information tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, the significant change here in this policy has to do with the 10 years of consecutive service as an employee being immediately prior to retirement, or five years uninterrupted service immediately prior to retirement, and total years of service being 15. So it's a change, previously, the old version of the policy simply said, the employee has served a minimum of 10 consecutive years, and so that would, that could have meant early in the career, and then really just coming back briefly to then participate in the retirement plan. This aligns the policy a little bit better with another provision in that policy about retirement pay, so there was a change over the last few years as well. But that policy always stated that there have to be 10 years of consecutive service immediately prior to retirement, and so this new version of the policy aligns the healthcare benefit a little bit more closely with what's in the policy for retirement pay.
Thank you. Board members, any questions? Thank you so much. We'll now move on to Ms. Kim Tate to present a recommendation of school library standards and school librarians.
Thank you, Chair Lohr, members of the board, Dr. Scheichel. It's my privilege this evening to share with you, it's been a while since we have been together to celebrate school libraries, and so this is a way of helping people understand a little bit about what school libraries do, and of course, to celebrate the librarians who work every day in them. As a child and a teenager, my school libraries were solemn spaces. They had a multi-droored, tiered catalog, red Reader's Guide, periodical literature, I see some heads shaking, at least one World Book Encyclopedia set, and a mammoth circulation desk that was guarded by a librarian who took the card out of the book and stamped very emphatically in my book, my due date. And while the space honestly always felt welcoming to me, this pales in comparison to the libraries that serve our students in Rockingham County Public Schools today. April is School Library Month, and years ago, in what I call the before times, each year, I would try to make sure that we let people know how libraries may look different today, and of course, this today began National School Library Week. I'm honored to share the transformative work that is happening in our school libraries. Our libraries are guided by the AASL standards, and that first standard is fostering collaboration. You might see STEM stations in the library today. You'll find puzzles and games where students work together, learning how to collaborate with each other, and spend time not necessarily dictated by the curriculum, but by their choice to be welcomed into the library. Our librarians seek community partners to bring that collaborative learning beyond the walls of our schools, and they teach collaboration through breakouts, which address not only content, but also critical thinking. During our Safe and Caring Schools Project, it was librarians who guided students through Maslow's Hierarchy of Needs in a simulation using Kivoplanks. This simulation helped them to determine things that dictated student behavior and capacity for self-actualization, and it was the catalyst for their individual and group inquiry. Collaboration nurtures our students' ability to problem solve because it fosters positive relationships. You can see from the photos the number of high school students who visit our elementary school libraries to lead, to read with our elementary students. In one of our libraries, they do a wonderful collaboration, identifying through English classes at the high school and elementary fifth graders, which picture books are going to win the Caldecott, and then they watch together with anticipation to determine if their recommendations... recommendations were correct. The students collaborate to explain their thinking, and it clarifies what they know, what they've learned, and it also benefits so readily their peers. Libraries welcome community and university volunteers. You'll see them doing some STEM work there with science. And librarians establish stations that give students an opportunity to engage with each other in learning. It's driven often by their own choices and desire to learn. Gone are the days when librarians insisted on silent spaces. They're truly a collaborative beehive of learning. Curation is another important standard, because technology has made curation both accessible and personal. Librarians frequently book talk titles so that students can create their to-be-read lists, and we hope that they continue to have those to-be-read lists well into adulthood. These are titles for their independent reading. The librarians' displays share student recommendations as well as thematic titles that invite our students to see the library as belonging to them, not to the librarian. Students often share in-person and digital book talks to engage their peers in texts that might be both relevant and appealing. One of the most inspiring things in our school libraries is to see the frequent sharing that happens among the students, whether they're creating bookmarks, talking to each other in very serious and thoughtful conversations, finding their voice through what they read. They curate their own resource list in the library catalog, in reading response journals, in Wakelet, which is a digital curation tool. They can curate their own resources in the World Book Online as well as in our databases. And this fosters independence and connection. It teaches the students vital agency and executive function, because they will need these curation skills. They're valued by employers who want workers who know how to operate and find information quickly and hold on to it. Our librarians also engage. They host and lead battles of the books. These are competitions that our students participate in by choice, and these are students in our middle schools who want a reading community within their school. The libraries host things where students can tinker. They build. They engage with authors who visit their classrooms in person and virtually, or who come to us through young author visits. It's not a place to visit once a week, or as a time separate from instruction. Our libraries are now hosting chess tournaments, and if you go to some of our middle and high school libraries, it has gotten quite serious. It's quite the competition, and students ask to go there, and many of our middle school students are learning how to play chess in their school library. There are quite the lunchtime matches as well. They go there for Socratic seminars, where students defend their thinking about what they've read. Librarians organize book character dress-up days about books and characters that matter to them, as well as librarians often moderate project presentations, which engage students in vital public speaking skills, which you heard some great public speaking skills this evening, before an authentic audience. Our libraries are places to explore. The learning can be directed by the standards, but they are also places where students code, where they do book tastings, and where they conduct challenges, everything from cup stacking to Kivoplanks. These require students to think critically, to learn reliance and resilience, and to find answers to their own questions. And so, whether we're doing glow toss or robots, exploring needle working, leading the morning news, or outside the physical walls, library exploration extends far beyond a set of books or a research paper. Our libraries are a welcoming space for every student. Resources are multilingual whenever possible, and I can tell you when librarians collaborate, this is often a great source of conversation. Where can I get access to books that are in the languages of the students who come to our school? To make sure that a new student can read in his or her native language. Students often adopt shelves that they maintain on their own. It gives them a sense of ownership and leadership in our libraries. And as you can see, everyone is included in that library, whether they're buddy reading in chairs or under the chairs. For the past eight years, the Riverbend Express has traveled into the community during the summer, bringing books and treats to families, extending the library beyond the school, and ensuring that there is access to books, even when we're not in school. I can tell you that during school closures, the RCPS librarians' first concern was how do we get books in the hands of those who need them the most? And they entered those buildings as soon as they were allowed and began doing curbside checkout. A lot of those librarians were also delivering meals to make sure that families who were hungry for words or food were served. The library includes families by offering online support through their webpages and providing links to Massanut and Regional Library resources. They are truly dedicated to including our students and their families. And traditionally, libraries have been spaces for inquiry, but that work not only extends to computers, but, as you can see, hands-on experimentation, a systematic approach to research. No longer do students need a set of index cards, paper, and pencil, though those are welcomed. Librarians create lessons that scaffold ethical inquiry using credible sources. This work is designed to guide appropriate tone, diction, and purpose when engaging in an online community. Librarians are often leaders in this inquiry, especially in the use of manipulatives, whether it's to extend an understanding of a magnet study in science, having an Inquiring Minds book discussion that students elected to attend, or working with a small group, conducting research in a social studies class. They ensure that all learners have a home in their spaces. Inquiry happens through asking thoughtful questions, through trial and error, and through hands-on experiences. The integrity, work ethic, creativity, and collaboration of the RCPS librarians is truly an inspiration. They serve on state and national boards, present at conferences, and are models for innovation and learning. Their purpose employs both the heart and the mind, and they serve their school communities by transforming learning each and every day. At this time, I'd like to ask the librarians who were able to attend this evening to please stand. Have some representative librarians, and I'd love for you to give them a round of applause. You're allowed to sit down now. But I would like to ask Stephanie May to stand. Stephanie is the librarian at Linville Edom Elementary School, and last month, she was named the Shenandoah Regional Librarian of the Year. So, next fall, Stephanie will be one of eight librarians considered for the Virginia Librarian of the Year. And we could not be more thrilled and proud for Stephanie and for all the work of all our librarians. Thank you for your service.
Thank you very much. And Stephanie, congratulations. We're definitely rooting for you. And thank you to all of our librarians, and thank you for those that were able to come tonight. It's, it's a super important job in our schools, and it really shows that you all care and love all of our students. So, thank you so much for your dedication. Now, we will move into our other business and school board questions and comments, and I think I'll start with Mr. Cross. Okay, thank you. Mr. Falk?
Ms. Tate, thank you so much for the wonderful presentation. As you were, as you were speaking, I was reflecting that from the time I started school at Linville Edom in 1964, through the time I graduated at Broadway High School in 1976, the library was one of my favorite places to go to in the schools. And when I got my driver's license at sixteen, one of the first places I did as a solo trip was to the library in Harrisonburg. And it has often been said that a child spends the first years of their life learning to read, and the rest of their life, reading to learn, and that's very true. And thank you all for everything you do.
Thank you. Dr. McQuicken?
Pass.
I have a couple of comments and questions. I'm gonna start with, I, I know there were so many more of you all here when we started, but if you can, if you're a high, if you're a student, one of our students, please raise your hand, just to say hi. Thank you guys so much for coming tonight. It really, it always brings us so much pleasure to see some of our students in attendance. So, thank you all for bearing with us, and thank you all for, for hanging in there with us for the entire meeting. And don't forget, it's shh on the Mr., on the MTC thing, okay? And speaking of shh on things, I noticed that we have a Mr. Bob Greby in our audience tonight, so shh. But also, thank you so much for all of the coverage WHSB does on our students. I believe there was a wonderful package this morning about a program where elementary students made, drew pictures and created a booklet, and then, high school students created stuffed animals. Dr. Scheichel, were you, are you familiar with this program, and can you tell us more?
I was not.
Oh, you didn't, you didn't see it?
I did not get to participate.
Well, you, I've got it DVR'd. You should definitely watch TV3. I believe it was Pleasant Valley and Turner, yeah, Mr. Knowles is telling you, it was Turner Ashby and Pleasant Valley, right? I thought it was Cub Run, but then Cub Run is a Spotswood school, so, right? Okay, I wanna learn more about that. Would you, would you like to share with the group, or am I putting you too much on the spot, Ms. Tate? Ah. And isn't, isn't that not only awesome, but isn't it awesome? Doesn't it show the community of, of Rockingham County Public Schools?
Kelly Sprague at Cub Run and Emily Quisenberry here at Turner Ashby. And the Cub Run writing and design led to the craft students creating a stuffed animal, and the students came here from Cub Run to actually get their stuffed animal, and they also have a color book that they wrote in their kindergarten class.
That's wonderful. And TV3 did a wonderful package, and you could see just the excitement on the kids' faces, and, and you could, you could really get a feel for how wonderful that opportunity was for all of our students. So, thank you. Thank you, TV3, for covering it. Thank you to our staff and students for being a part of it. I also have a question. Dr. Scheichel, would you like to address the computer access issue? Because I actually, I, I'm sorry, I forget your name, but I feel your pain. I, I helped students with, with research in the schools, and I kept saying, "Check out this link, check out this link," and they kept saying, "I can't check that one, I can't get to that one." So, I, I too have, have inquired about this, so I'm gonna give the floor to Dr. Scheichel to maybe give us some more information about that.
Yeah, so, when we use Securely as our filter, by law, we are required to filter inappropriate content on our computers. And in general, so the way the approach worked originally was that through Securely, there are categories of content. And so, now we could say, for example, we don't allow sexually explicit content, you know, on our computers. And so, if, if a website was on that blacklist, a list that basically said, "Okay, this website has inappropriate content," then it would be filtered. The problem that Securely is working on, and that unfortunately required us to move to a whitelist approach, was that students could use uncategorized websites to then redirect traffic to inappropriate content. And so, once you're aware of it, you simply can't ignore it. I know it's, it wasn't really a fun exercise for teachers to go through websites that they need, and again, that's an ongoing process. But we'll have to wait and see, you know, what Securely comes up with in terms of finding an approach that, that works better. But for now, because we legally have to filter, there's not really a good workaround for that. So, we fully understand it. You know, this isn't how we want to have filtering work either. But again, once you recognize that a particular problem exists, and until the company has a solution that's workable, we have to, you know, protect that access. And so, yeah, I apologize to the students that suffer from that. The teachers aren't happy about it either, and neither are we. It's not something that we want to do this way. But in the meantime, you know, we have to follow a process that also meets our legal obligations.
And it's my understanding that once a website is approved, and, and it's become easier by giving, instead of going through IT, each individual teacher can, can now, so it's getting better. It's still not, you know, better, better's subjective.
Well, you have to, right, so, the standard websites, you know, that teachers may use frequently, that's one, you know, solution. You know, teachers were, I know that was an inconvenience for a little bit, but at least it allowed teachers to basically whitelist pages. But, you know, anyone who does research online also knows that, you know, there are so many webpages that get created every day. There are webpages that aren't always, you know, on that list of whatever it is. Might be 500 pages that a teacher even whitelisted. And, but again, the way that that problem occurred, yeah, it made that necessary for now, and we'll have to wait and see, you know, where that goes long term.
Thank you. Dr. Scheichel, did you have anything else?
I have a few items. So, one, I want to make the board aware of our work with an organization you had previously heard about, the Virginia Center for Inclusive Communities. You dealt with a student matter recently in closed session, and as you, you know, remember, one of the big issues that arose as part of that student case was kind of the recognition that language in our middle and high schools that relates to either racially insensitive comments or other, you know, language that is simply inappropriate is really pretty prevalent, and more so than we actually expected once we started talking with students, started talking with teachers. And what we said at the time, and that's what we follow up with, is that we need to do some work to reduce the use of racist language, of, of language that demeans other people. And as part of that work, the Virginia Center for Inclusive Communities is going to work with us. And so, you may hear of some students that are, with parent permission, And so you may hear of some students that are, with parent permission, a diverse group of students that will be part of this effort to really just capture the student experience and what students hear in the hallway. Teachers aren't always, you know, present, you know, we need to make sure that we have a better understanding of what students face day to day in terms of what language is used at school and then also to figure out strategies to improve on that. So I just wanted to let you know, again, this is a diverse group of students with parent permission that will participate in that. So there's no student that is required to participate in these conversations, but it will allow us to get a good snapshot of what students tell us in terms of how they experience the school day. And then the second piece has to do with school safety. As you remember during the budget conversations, we had a lot of conversations about what items should be in the budget for school safety. I wanted to update you on my invitation to Sheriff Hutchison. So Sheriff Hutchison has been invited to come to a board meeting in May. We wanted to make sure that he can provide a review of how the addition of four middle school SROs has worked out and what his view is on potential expansion of that program. I know there was, you know, some disagreement on that. And again, just like last year, rather than bringing SRO funding through the budget, again, the effort is if the board wants to expand it, that it is done through either grant money or money that becomes available later in the budget season, just like last year where the board basically, from the beginning said, you know, if we can get, early on in January last year, Governor Youngkin had proposed legislation to place an SRO in every school, and that would have come with funding likely. That legislation did not pass. And so then in July, Sheriff Hutchison applied for a grant and four SROs were added. I do want to say, you know, it's always disappointing when I read on Facebook that somehow we aren't providing accurate information. Mr. Cross posted, you know, after the last, after one of the board meetings, a couple things. One, that we have 13 elementary schools that don't have an SRO. That's just disappointing on a factual level because we have 15 elementary schools. I would, I have hoped that board members are aware of how many schools we have. But beyond that, again, calling me basically a liar, saying that I said things that aren't true. Mr. Cross said that the board discussed SROs at a work session in early 2022, but was, he was met with opposition from me and the majority of the school board. And then a few months later, the massacre in Uvalde, Texas occurred, and then all of a sudden, I guess the board saw the light and moved to his position. And although that would make for a good story, it's simply factually inaccurate. The board retreat where we talked about SROs happened on June 4th, and the Uvalde shooting had already happened two weeks earlier. At that board meeting, board members clearly stated that they were supportive of additional SROs, but again, that we wanted to do this with money from the state rather than taxing the locality. And this is how we operate. We've, we, and again, Mr. Cross, it was Mr. Cross's proposal early in the year when he came on the board, and he knows that, and he's said that on multiple occasions. He asked for four middle school SROs. And the disagreement last year wasn't about whether we should have SROs, it was simply how they should be funded. And again, when that then shows up on Facebook, it's just personally disappointing because, again, being pointed out that somehow we provided inaccurate information. Mr. Cross knows this and he also acknowledges this, of course, in private conversations because when the funding for the SROs did come through, he sent me a text message that says, "This is a personal dream of mine come true. Thank you for all you have done. I sincerely mean that." And so again, that's a different tone than to say that we didn't want SROs. And one example of how we are improving school safety, again, not necessarily by putting it into the ongoing budget, but by working all avenues that we have. One of the budget items that also wasn't included, that Mr. Cross was very supportive of, as were other board members, but it didn't make it into the budget, was the question of external access. So access to our buildings through a key card system. We have a school or two where there are a number of keys that aren't well-tracked, and so certainly that provide, that is an issue for us. And so at schools where we're not clear who has what key, that building, we wanted to rekey that and then take all the keys back at the schools where we know who has them, and then to provide external access only through a key card system. Again, based on the budget situation and what we wanted to solve first in terms of hiring staff, that $500,000 project did not make it into the budget. But I do want to say that in the meantime, I've had conversations with county leadership and with the county administrator. And so in terms of money that we give back at the end of the school year, that is currently all earmarked for future capital projects. And we've come to an agreement that $500,000 of the end of year funds can now be used to, again, outside that regular budget, to provide that key card system to our schools. And so again, working with leadership and working with all the funding options that we have, again, this is how we make these things happen, and it allows us to still take care of all the other budget items that we had in the budget. And so again, Sheriff Hutchison hopefully will be able to talk to us in May, and then we can go from there in terms of the conversation around additional SROs. Thank you.
Thank you. So to be clear, we'll be rekeying the exterior doors this summer?
Yes, that will be, we give money back at the end of the fiscal year, so the fiscal year ends June 30. And so we've already taken inventory as part of budget planning, you know, which schools know exactly what keys are available and who has them and where that is not, so at those schools, we can simply collect all the keys, right? And so then there is no keyed access to external doors. And then doors where staff need to have access from the outside, they will get a key card system. It's quite involved because those are networked systems, so you have to run internet access, network access to those doors so that the key cards can be used. The advantage is that then at any time someone leaves, you simply revoke their key card access. It doesn't affect anybody else. And so teachers will be able to use that key card and staff for all the doors where they should have access. And at the schools where we are not entirely sure whether we know where every key is, at those schools, all the external doors would be rekeyed. And then same process. Those keys, you know, the keys for the doors that need access, those would be replaced with key cards. And for the other doors, those keys would simply not be handed out. They might be available to an administrator, but nobody else.
Wonderful.
But yes, so that would be, that would be a project that begins as soon as the new fiscal year starts. I don't have a completion time because again, I'll likely have to get some bids and, you know, time that project, but that's going to happen in the next school year.
Wonderful.
Ms. Law, I do want to say something since my name was brought up and there was quite a bit of misinformation that was shared by the superintendent. During our meeting in which we talked about SROs at MTC, at that meeting, Dr. Scheichel, you brought information and data from someone from JMU that talked about how SROs did not stop school shootings. And the rest of the board also wasn't looking to add more SROs at that time. The Uvalde shooting happened in May of that year, and Governor Youngkin didn't give his $15 million towards SROs, which he took out of DCJS until June of that year. So yes, he did propose a bill and it passed the House but failed in the Senate where every school in Virginia would have an SRO. And the Senate didn't pass that bill after the House did. But there was no money allotted at that time for that. That money wasn't taken out until after the Uvalde shooting, which if I go back and check, it was on June the 17th that he took that $15 million out of DCJS, the Department of Criminal Justice System. And he put that towards school divisions that wanted to apply for grant money for SROs. So there was no thought of adding four more SROs until after the Uvalde shooting. That is accurate, that is not a lie. I'm not going to argue about that tonight. Very disappointed that you brought that up, but I understand your time is short and you want to get a few things out. You had all the time to call me or talk with me personally about if you felt that I was wrong, and you've never reached out to me one time to tell me I was wrong. So I am disappointed with that tonight. With that said, I mean, that there's, that's really the only thing, there's quite a few things that I heard tonight, but that's a big, we added, as I've said before, we added, I think, three SROs in 20-plus years in Rockingham County Public Schools. Three SROs. That's an accurate statement, 20-plus years. We added one at East Rockingham High School because we built that school, so that one was, that was there. We put one out at MTC because MTC requested to have an SRO, so we received one there. And then when Don Woodrum, who graciously took on the position out at Rockingham Academy, took that position, she requested, after the sheriff had requested in his budget for years for more SROs, which he was blocked down. That's fact as well. So if we want to talk about facts, let's go back and talk about all the years that Sheriff Hutchison also requested SROs and he was blocked. And the only time that he ever received an extra SRO is when one of your administrators requested to have an SRO that basically said, "I'm not taking the job unless there's an SRO out here at RA." And so because Don Woodrum is one of the best administrators here in Rockingham County, she got what she wanted. And she got an SRO, which has worked out awesomely, that's not even a word, but it's a word I'm going to use now, awesomely, at RA. So that's fact. Three SROs in 20-plus years. And I'm going to do all I can do to make sure there's an SRO in every school. So thank you, Ms. Chair, for allowing me to speak since my name was brought up. And if there's any other conversation that Mr. Scheichel, that you would like to have about this, I'd be glad to talk with you afterwards.
Thank you. I would just like to point out that while I've been on the board, we've, well, it's my understanding that prior to me coming on to the board, and it doesn't have anything to do with me coming on the board, I think it has to do with Dr. Scheichel. There wasn't a great relationship necessarily between the sheriff's office and the schools. And I think Dr. Scheichel has worked to foster that. But only once has Mr. Hutchinson come and talked to the board, and I think that's important for him to do, and that's why we have invited him in May. And I'm very excited to see what he has to say. But he didn't come to the board and ask for SROs except for the one time that...
He requested it in his budget that he, that was sent to the Board of Supervisors.
Okay.
And so, no, did he come before the board and request before the board more SROs? No, but he requested that in his budget and was never given that.
Yep, except that when Sheriff...
And I'm not done.
Okay.
But perhaps...
I'm not, wait a second, I'm, 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 I'm chair. There wasn't a bad relationship before Mr. Scheichel took over. There was, I worked for 12 years at Rockingham County Sheriff's Office, and Sheriff Farley hired me during that season when I first started. And there's always been a pretty positive working relationship between the sheriff's office and the county public schools. And I actually came out and worked in 2010 before Mr. Hutchinson took over, and there was a good positive relationship between our school division, the crime prevention unit and the county schools. And so there wasn't a bad relationship. If they've improved, that's great, they should improve. But there wasn't just some bad relationship between the sheriff's office and the schools. And so I'm, again...
I just don't think there was quite the open door, is really what I meant. Perhaps I misspoke some. I don't think there was quite the open door. And I would like to open that door, and I think we definitely need to improve our communication, the board to the sheriff. That's what I meant.
No problem.
Well, I will say that when Sheriff Hutchison makes a budget request to the Board of Supervisors that's not funded by the school board. So that's a concern that needs to be brought up with the funding body, not with us. But I will say, again, you complained that I didn't call you. Well, that's because you simply post information on Facebook. And again, what you posted was that the board did discuss SROs at a work session in early 2022. And then a few months later, the massacre...
No, that's not correct.
And not done either. And a few months later...
We did discuss, we did discuss SROs, but there wasn't, you and the board was not in favor of SROs.
Madam Chair.
So if you, if you want to argue in public, Dr. Scheichel, I don't mind arguing in public, but I'm trying not to tonight, and you continue to try to get your point across. And all I'm asking is, is can we move this to the back room and so we don't have to argue in public? That's all I'm asking.
I think now is a very good time to go ahead and enter closed meeting.
Thank you.
Board members, do I have a, do I have a motion?
I move that the board enter a closed meeting to discuss and consider the following pursuant to the provisions of Virginia Code Section 2.2-3711A1. Personnel, specific public officers, appointees or employees, including the division superintendent, for the purpose of considering such individuals' assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, disciplining or resignation. And A2, one or more particular students specifically related to discipline and requests regarding compulsory school attendance based on religious beliefs that would involve disclosure of information contained in a scholastic record concerning a student.
Thank you, Dr. McQuelkin. Do I have a second? Thank you, Mr. Folk. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign. Thank you all for attending tonight. The motion carries 4-0. We are in closed session. Everyone, please have a safe prom season and safe travels home.